All right, and Christine Pippa would mind giving her permission?
Yeah, thank you.
Get started, no problem. All right. We are going to first talk about any adjustments to the agenda. Annie, can you take us through that?
We do not need an executive session.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, moving next to a public comment. I don't see members of the public here, but let's put it out there. Would any members of the public be wanting to make a public comment? Go ahead and raise your digital hand if you do. Okay, seeing none, let's move forward into presentation and discussion items. Item four A is the fiscal year 25 budget update and timeline. And for that, we have Annie and Chris.
Yes, so Chris and I will take folks through the budget overview and presentation. It is linked into the agenda. Does everyone have access to it? Perfect. So as we do all the time, we start with our vision and theory of action, our strategic priorities. Because our goal is, of course, that our resource allocation strategy reflects those things that we say are important to us. Our strategic investments in FY25, this list is not meant to be exhaustive, but just some high level changes. We've moved business management services from one to two days per week as a contracted service out of house to full time in-house to assist with management of capital projects. As folks know, we have the fields, we are exploring deep energy retrofit, we have building renovations, we're looking at a playground renovation. And as well as provide additional fiscal and operational capacity, we have increased our educational support professionals. As stipulated in individual education plans and in programmatic needs by 2.0, our full time equivalent, so two positions. Since the FY24 budget that was presented to you folks in the spring. We did, and Chris will talk a bit more about this when we go through changes to function subtotals. But we had a position, OT position as a contracted service. So it's not a district employee, it's a contracted service. That's not a new position. We had typically paid for that using the circuit breaker funds. The good news, and this is a huge shout out to Celia Snow, is our out of district placements dropped precipitously. Downside to that, though, we should get far less circuit breaker funding. This expense, it would not have changed anything for the town or anything else. This expense was not, we didn't have it listed in the budget. It shouldn't have been listed in the budget. We had it, we were paying this contract. On using circuit breaker funds, circuit breaker funds would not, they're diminishing. And so therefore, it does have an impact. One, you're seeing an increase to total budget. This is contracted services in there already, it's not new, and it doesn't have, it does have an impact. Increases to local contribution. We are investing in the recruitment and retention of experienced highly qualified personnel. Sometimes what that looks like is this committee is always evaluating regionally competitive wages for each class of employee. There are sometimes that adjustments to wages occur after the passing of the budget. So perhaps what was passed in FY24, an adjustment was made in the summer or some other way. And so the comparison of wages, you're really comparing to what was presented in FY24. Although the adjustment may have occurred in FY24, but it didn't show up in the original budget document last year. And we have replaced staff who have retired or left with very experienced and highly qualified personnel. And we've adjusted our school transportation expenditures to reflect inflation. You should know we haven't activated in five years. Chris is now going to walk us through, and these are explained, you can see changes from FY24 to FY25 in our function subtotals. And then a brief explanation that Chris will take us through along with some additional information about finances.
Okay, so basically, excuse me, we have all of the budgets, function subtotals listed here. What I'll touch on really are just the ones that that changed by more than 5% rather than going through each and every line, if that's okay. So the first one, general administration, school committee, a lot of these items really just got tweaked a little bit. A lot of the items such as MASC dues had not increased at the rate that we thought they would. And so therefore, I could reduce that amount in the budget and still feel comfortable having, you know, the amount that we changed it to, being sufficient enough. And a lot of these items, you know, if you look at it, you know, the change in that line is only $700. So it's not huge, but because it's such a small category, it shows up as a pretty big expense. So that's, that's why you see such a big expense change there. Finance and business is the next one. That basically added my salary in. It also added about $22,000 of cost. The town is upgrading their payroll system, and they asked the school if we could cover the school portion of that cost. So there's an additional $22,000 in that line, so that that increased it a little more. We can jump down to district-wide academic leadership. That is 9% of an increase, and it's largely the result of two items. Number one was that we had increased the secretarial salaries at the end of last fiscal year to bring them up to basically the, the average in the area. And unfortunately, that was not budgeted for last year. So when we compare this year to last year, it kind of gets a double whammy because we're comparing it to before we increased it at the end of last year, and then we built upon that increase for this year. So it's showing a larger amount. And then the contracted services for special education that were covered by circuit breaker in the past are now included in the budget as we won't have enough circuit breaker funds to cover that going forward. Little bit further down substitutes. We didn't budget really any more days for the substitutes, but the substitute rate was increased at the end, or last year. Basically because it was hard to get subs at what we are currently paying them, and it brought us up to the, again, the average in the area. So that accounts for the 12.5% increase there. Power salaries, excuse me, increased by 8.79%. We added a couple of powers that were needed in the special education area, and so that accounts for the increase in that particular line. Professional development decreased by 15%. Again, some of these items were left alone, such as the contractual obligation. We kept that line item in just because it's important to have what we are obligated to cover in the budget, just in case. But some of the other areas that we had in the past few years covered through the budget are now going to be handled in districts. So it wasn't necessary to have as high of an amount in that particular area, we decreased it accordingly. It was kind of a similar thing with textbooks. Where we had textbooks budgeted last year to be replaced, this year, we have some textbooks that will be replaced. But a lot of them would be grant funded, and, and again, we're having less textbooks replaced this year than we did last year. So we have to decrease the amount of that line. Other instructional services, so this is the one that Anne had mentioned. A $73,000 increase. That is largely, again, the special ed contracted service that we had paid from circuit breaker before, now is in the regular budget to be covered here. A little further on the next page, psychological services. So we have the same number of people in this area, but we had a person leave and another more experienced person came in and took their place. So that accounts for the larger increase there. Transportation is a little bit of a wild card. Actually, the ad was posted today to go out to bid for transportation. And it also appeared on the state's goods and services page. So we are beginning the process of going out to bid for transportation. I built in an increase in the regular ed transportation of 30%. Just to cover us, just in case, you know, the, the existing contract is five years old. So I'm assuming a pretty good size increase there. And it was, you know, it's not showing a 30% increase because other items in this area did not increase by 30%. We had some decreases in the special ed transportation just due to the number of out of district students that we have. So we were able to decrease the budget in that area, and it kind of kept the overall percentage down a little bit. Custodial services, so we hired a couple of new custodians during the year last year. They were brought in at higher salaries than those that had left. So again, that accounts for the majority of the increase in that particular area. Utility services is the next one, over 5%. Let's see, electricity, water, sewer, we looked at all of these for the past three years, the costs that we had experienced. And going forward, I accounted for a slight increase because our kilowatt hour rate increased at the beginning of this year. But as, as you can see, it's still down 8.74%, even with that little increase, just because of the usage that has gone down. So we were able to reduce those lines a little bit. Maintenance of grounds. We had contracted services to pay for the mowing of Hadley Elementary School. We've been handling that in-house, so that accounts for the, the $8,000 decrease there. Maintenance of equipment, again, I mean, you know, some of these, it's, it's really kind of tough. It's a $500 decrease. It shows up as, as a large percentage, but it's $500, again, based on what we've spent in the past. So, you know, that, that accounts for the decrease there. And then we had a couple of special ed decreases, one in the payment to Massachusetts schools. We had a couple of students that are aging out in that area. And we have one in payment to non-public schools, again, aging out. Or I think that one actually moved away, but either way, they won't be our student next year. So we were able to eliminate that from the budget. And that is basically all of the items that were either plus or minus 5% or more. I can certainly answer any questions on individual lines you might have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris about any of these individual increases or decreases?
Still your show, brother, revenue comparison.
Okay, sorry, I'm jumping from screen to, there we go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll go to the revenue comparison next. Excuse me, this just compares, oh, I'm sorry.
Question?
Yes.
So I know you took that one student out, as well as the, you know, the payments to math school especially. So what happens if we have a student who comes into the district? How are we going, I mean, are we not, is there any? Do you see what I mean? Is there anything that, that?
In other words, if, if there's a new student who needs special?
Right, now that's not, the money's not in the budget. For that.
That is correct. The, the money is not in the budget. It depends. If a student comes into the district after April 1st, that student is the responsibility of the sending district, as long as it's, they're being sent to a public school. If it's a private school, that does not come into play. So no, we, we don't have any extra funds budgeted in case a student moves in. We'd have to make that up.
Historically, we've tapped school choice, I believe, to make up that shortfall.
I think what you meant to say, Chris, is that they, if the April 1st rule applies to private school placements, not public school placement.
I did get that back, which is my fault, yeah.
So private school placements, not public school placements, and yes, it's been.
Okay, it could happen, and it's always been a wild card. But we've, we've been blessed with a school choice account that has been healthy and has provided us the buffer to be able to make that up. And then, once a new student is in and we've accounted for it by way of school choice, we've put it in the budget into subsequent years to, to build that back in. Great question.
Okay, any others before I move on to revenue? Okay. So next up, we have the revenue comparison. It's basically showing how we're going to pay for the budget. And if you compare FY24 to 25, you can see we have that increase in local contribution of 3.75%. Then we have just really not a lot of change, but some movement in the grant funds that we are using to help cover the budget. The ESAR funding is ending on September 30th of 2024. So all the money has to be spent by then. So we don't have any available for FY25. Some of the items are staying the same, but we are utilizing a couple of grants, the 117 grant, student opportunity, and the 460 early college to offset some salaries that are helping to keep the budget down. We're using a little more school choice this year than we did last year. And also more pre-K revolving. We are taking in more pre-K, pre-K funds for the students that attend. And we have more funds available to be able to use to offset the budget again. So if you compare this year to last year, you can see we've, we've increased by about $34,000 from last year to this year in the grant funds that we're using. Really not a big amount, a little over 2% of an increase. And you can see at the bottom, the total revenues show up an increase of 3.5%, which is the same as what the budget was increased by. And I don't remember, Anne, if I talk about the, the next item underneath that, or is that yours?
No, it's all you until the groovy charts, you finish out the page.
Can I ask a question about revenue?
Absolutely.
First of all, so nice to see non-local revenues. A lot of the grant funding that you've applied for, Annie, paying off with, with revenue there. Thank you for that. Keep up the great work in applying. I have a question about after-school revenue. Is that something that's historically shown up in the revenue comparison? And we're not seeing it here, or is it accounted for differently?
It's, it's accounted for differently. The after-school program is similar to the lunch program in that it's self-supporting. So we don't have either one included in our budget. We wouldn't show the expenses or the revenues.
Right, I, I, I think what tripped me up was seeing the pre-K here and why it's here and not there, you know. I sort of think of this, them the same ancillary programs, if you will, but got, got it, it's, it's, it shows up differently.
Yeah, and I, if I could add to that, Chris, so technically, although if you're thinking historically in the lunch account, you'd say, no, Mackenzie, that's not even close to being correct. But now that lunches are, actually, the state does provide lunch for every child. They operate Hadley Kids and the food services account like a true enterprise fund, meaning they're designed to be self-sustaining through fees. Pre-K is not self-sustaining, and the absence of support from the operating budget, it's, it's not going to happen. It's not fee dependent. And so we, we wouldn't, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, we wouldn't include enterprise fund revenues as source of funding for the operating budget. Because it's, there's.
Got it, yes.
Very good. Thank you. Please continue, Chris.
Sure. All right, so the next portion, it basically just shows the total budget and the, the historical increases that we've had over the past few years. As you can see, we've really worked very hard to try to keep those increases down. Also, to the right side, you can see the local portion of the budget. And again, how we've tried to keep them down, and also the amount of money that's been returned to the town each of the years. So, you know, as you can see, in FY21, we returned a considerable amount back to the town. But we have tried in the past couple of years to have something left in the budget that would help the town as well. Obviously, we don't know how FY24 is looking yet, and, and FY25, we certainly can't predict, you know, a certain amount going back to the town. But, you know, if there's something, it will be returned. If there's not, then, then it won't. But, I mean, it is nice to see at least a few years of, of returning funds to the town. We assume that that's helped the overall town budget.
Right, and I can pick up from there if there are questions for that. I just will, I always have to ask. So obviously, those increases were, the budget didn't increase, and clearly don't take into consideration. If you take into consideration the money returned to the town, the local, in some cases, it actually decreases.
That is correct, yes.
And so then, just so the remaining, I'll go through this quickly. It's not financial, but it's just kind of context of where we at, and there's some good news in here. So first of all, enrollment data trends and projections. You can see, this is total enrollment, right? So this isn't foundation, so this doesn't drive chapter 70. This drives, these are students in seats, and this is the October 1 count. It's actually gone up a bit since October 1. Our October 1 count, we did see an increase from FY23 to FY24, and that's good because it is more or less kind of trending downward there. So nice to see that increase. And you can see that graphically as well. Foundation enrollment, which is what you see the chart on page seven. Foundation enrollment, now, why is this really important? Fortunately, the foundation enrollment continues to fall backwards. So actual enrollment is sitting in the situation, it's a relation to school choice. Foundation enrollment includes all the students for whom the town is fiscally responsible for their education. That is your foundation enrollment. And you see that that has trended downward, and that is what drives chapter 78 to the towns. And so that, we are in what's called hold harmless. Actually, this town should have seen pretty significantly decreasing revenues in the form of chapter 78. But there isn't what's called a full harmless provision that's pretty much just kept that stable for the town. There's also information here, data about kind of race, ethnicity, and selective populations. And you can see, particularly if you go to page eight, the next page, and you look at district enrollment by race, ethnicity, and selected populations, you can see that between last year and this year, a little bit more diverse in terms of student population. We have seen, well, well, we've seen a lot of our selected populations between last year and this year holding steady. We have seen significant increases, if you look back, like a five-year look back, right? Five or six-year look back, where you see increases in students qualifying as high needs of about 10%. Similarly, our low-income population, about 9% greater than it was in fiscal. Those populations have grown, although relatively stable from last year. If you go to page nine, you can see some information on school choice. Thank goodness, we really want to say thank you to every single family who chooses Hadley Public Schools. It means the world to us. I'm glad that we could offer some additional things this year, like us talk to school choice families and encourage more people to consider Hadley as an option. See now that our choice in is going to be in the right direction. We had a slight uptick, although it's been relatively stable in choice out, which we certainly see that to try to contain that expense for the town. And you can see the breakdown of revenues and expenses. FY24 is projected, we won't have actual in the fiscal year. School choice is billed, and we receive the revenues to actual FTEs. So it starts the day a student comes in, and it's why, in many of these charts, I just round to head count. But really, we get paid like it could be 110.4 kids. Depends on the day they walk in the door. We have two virtual school options, or students do. And you can see, which I think this committee took into consideration, when I had presented a policy option of like, what do we see in virtual schools? You can see that the participation in virtual schools has declined markedly since fiscal year 20, where our virtual school tuitions were just about 48,000, and now they're just about 10. And then this, and I apologize for the blur, it's when, you know, I put something, one word into Google box. But I always, we always like to look at where are students going and where are they coming from, and what's happening? Seeing changes. It also helps us try to think about what kinds of programs or opportunities might be more interesting to our students and track. So you can see, again, it is great news, our overall school choice, that 124 students choicing in, 47 students are residents of Hadley choosing other public school districts. We did notice something this year, I mean, from FY23 to FY24, we saw a pretty big uptick in families from Amherst choosing Hadley Public Schools from 14, choosing them last year to 24 at this point. And we're still accepting school choice students. And we have, and I think I mentioned here, that we, so we have students coming in from about 21 districts and going out to, I have the numbers. Going out to part two right now, I can't find it, it's written in the narrative. And also, I break it down for you by grade and by school. It's also helpful to us, right? So we pay attention more, it's like, wait a minute, why did that cohort increase? And we sit around as a leadership team and with teachers and say, what happened between this grade and this grade? Like, did the cohort have stayed stable? Why do we see an uptick in kids? What might be attributed to that? We do exit interviews. For the most part, families usually just talk about programming, different children, you know, larger usually, and frequently, kids are coming to us or looking for a smaller school, right? But we pay attention to changes grade to grade, to, to try to dig deeper into that and say, what might this mean and what might be happening? And HES right now, fantastic, they have over five times the number of students attending through school choice and exiting through school choice. So that's good. And also, always, I am very proud of this, I didn't do my little tiny, unimpressive bar graph. But students with disabilities, families who have children with disabilities, choice in for every two students who choice in for another district, only one parent of a student with disabilities or resident student chooses. Me, I say this all the time, but I would like to be thought of as a destination district for families of children with disabilities. So that's one indicator that I track very closely. People, I always like to correct the misthinking that, oh, you certainly don't want that because it's more expensive. It's important to remember that school choice is a flat reimbursement of $5,000. But we are reimbursed what's called special education increment for all special education services for a student on an IEP. There, the town of residence is fiscally responsible for that student. Similarly, a student on an IEP leaves Hadley and goes to another school, we are fiscally responsible. Which is why you can't just times 124 times 5,000. We do that for budgeting purposes. Why you see that revenues may be higher, like, that to a 7.5, I get far lower, is that special education increment that we also receive for students with IEPs. Charter school enrollment, the good news is, sorry?
Is that a flat increment increase, special ed, or is it, does it vary based on what the need is?
Exactly, so it's billed to actual and it's personal to that IEP.
I see.
So it's billed to actual, it's personal to that IEP. So unlike, it's a great question, Hamera, when we think about our vocational school tuitions, it's actually usually, frequently, there's like a special education surcharge, it's not billed to actual, it's what is in the IEP. At the end of the year, Celia has to go through and say, I'm demonstrating all the services and the cost of every service for a school choice student. So charter school enrollment, good news, bad news, so the good news is that enrollments have decreased. We, not by a ton, but we take everything that we can get, right? So we have seen a decrease in charter school enrollment. That is extremely hard when you have a charter school right in your backyard. Super hard. But charter school tuitions have gone up, so a decrease in enrollment, but an increase in what charter schools are anticipated to cost. Christine, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious about how exactly the charter schools come up with their enrollment costs, and does the state have any input? Does the, is there any kind of, so I, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, if they increase by, you know, a ridiculous amount or percentage, do we have any way of saying no to how much you pay?
Sure, answer to that is no. So how the charter school formula works is Sure answer to that is no. So how the charter school formula works is um, what they do is they determine what, they use the same foundation enrollment that the state uses. And um, so it's, it's not just a flat fee. If you look at charter school tuitions, every sending district is paying a different tuition rate to that charter school. Because it's dictated by, and at a future school committee meeting, I can pull up my primers and better graphs for as, for as good as like in screenshot graphs, they're better than explain it. But foundation enrollment that the state says, the state says, this is what we believe it costs to educate a student adequately at this grade level, with these characteristics, this is what we think is the foundation for um, well, actually, it's our foundation too, but for district administration, for curriculum and instruction for faculty. So they come up with a foundation base rate. Um, just like in our own foundation calculation, certain students are, can cost more to educate. So a student in a chapter seventy-four program, or maybe potentially a student, there's, there's additional for a student uh, with an IEP potentially. So they look at who are the actual students from Hadley that are going to this particular charter school? What is the foundation rate for that student with those characteristics? And the other thing that happens, everyone hears me talk about uh, bugaboo with the charter formula, it really hits small schools like ours a lot. Is that the percentage that the town pays above what's required, it's called percentage above foundation, the charter school gets to tack that percentage on to its tuition for that town. So I'm going to give you an example, because I remember years ago, use Lennox as an example, the charter schools, they sent to, this is many, many years ago. And they were spending for a particular tuition, like twenty-five thousand dollars. I thought, goodness gracious, how can that be? Well, Lennox today, I don't know what they were then, spends a hundred and fifty percent above hundred and fifty cents. So that hundred and fifty percent, whatever the foundation is, it's locked on, tapped on. And then there also is, so that's the formula for doing it. There is no pushback every year. That's how it goes. Um, there is state aid that comes into play. And again, I can bring my charter school like primer back for a quick refresher on charter schools. Because sometimes it feels, it it feels counterintuitive, like the enrollments went down, but we're going to pay more money and that seems a little weird. And it's, yeah, they do get to, they, those tuitions again are set by foundation, foundation goes up every year, but there's that percentage above foundation that factors in. So we're seeing a decline in enrollment, tuition payments. Chapter seventy enrollment, which starts on page fourteen, and this could be attributed to all those two things, but this is an active area that we're trying to pursue, right? To provide opportunities for students that hop-ins that feel relevant, that feel career connected. That, yeah. So we've seen at, in FY nineteen, we have thirty-five students in chapter seventy-four programs, whether that was Smith Oak or Franklin Tech. And we are projecting thirteen at this point in FY twenty. Those tuitions in FY nineteen were six hundred and, uh, almost six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which projecting those in FY twenty-five to be closer to two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We are assuming what the increase might be. Those rates have not been published. Vogue schools do not follow that complicated form of logistics. Charter schools, Vogue schools have a flat tuition and they increase it by percentage increases in. And Christine, you may have been thinking for private special education schools, private schools that tru-, that serve students with disabilities. Those rate increases are subject to approval by the operational services division. And schools can say, whoa, flag on the field, they can, it doesn't mean it's heard. But that is not an option with charter tuition. Different laws. The good news in all of this on page fifteen is for the last two years, and I always point out how hard this is to do. We only have one way to bring kids in. It's through school choice. We have multiple ways for kids to leave. They can choice out, they can go to uh, a chapter seventy-four program. They can go to a charter school. There are more charter school options beginning in seventh grade than there are in the elementary grade. So having said that, for the past two years, total choice in has exceeded choice out exits, even though there are more pathways to leave. This is wonderful, wonderful news. I want to say that I attribute this entirely to, first of all, our beautiful students, because when they do step shadow days, kids are so nice. I'm going to tell you about that in the student, in the superintendent report, like, like crazy nice. But our teachers, right, student shadow, these lovely qualified faculty. And our administrators are just hitting the ball out of the park. Not me, not talking about me, I'm talking your building principals, your support staff that are just doing a bang-up job. And um, from A to Z, try to make it a welcoming experience. Um, so although this says one twenty-four, because I use the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education numbers, they take a sni- snapshot in time to get school choice numbers. I can tell you that it's actually higher than that now, up to one thirty-one in actual real-time school brains. Um, so it just keeps going up. We just took in a new school choice student last week. Um, and then our revenue trends. So uh, we are incredibly grateful to the town this out that there's required and there's uh, extra local. And so what the town is required to spend and the additional money that the town provides for the schools. And we are keenly aware of the fact that the town um, does not say to the schools, you're getting minimum and live with it. The town has been extremely supportive to us. We know that it's um, why we also include that chart, not trying to pat ourselves on the back, but we're trying to stay with the chart that says we really are always working to present responsible and modest increases. So we're keenly aware of the town's generosity. And so um, we pay attention to that. Although it is important to note on page seventeen, while the town is extremely generous and grateful that uh, since fiscal year eighteen, these percentages on page seventeen, look at the school, school department expenditures, and you get this from the Division of Local Services. And so FY twenty-three is the most recent data, we're not done with FY twenty-four yet. Division of Local Services says what each expenditure category is as a percentage of the total operating budget of the town. So in FY eighteen, the schools are about forty-four percent. In FY twenty-three, they're down to thirty-seven percent. So while the town is extremely generous, the town also is, is schools are not, and you can look at this comparison in the next graph. They're not absorbing um, you know, over half of the town budget. Whereas if you look at many other towns in Hampshire County, uh, Amherst, Belcher Town, Hatfield, um, over fifty percent. Randian South Hadley, a little closer to forty-eight uh, to fifty percent. This graph is FY twenty-two because two of those towns had not submitted their FY twenty-three data to Division of Local Services. So to get as many towns as possible. Hatfield and East Hampton, if there were actually, why twenty-three would read zero because they haven't submitted to that. So town is extremely generous and hopefully the town sees the schools as not trying to hoover up every school resource and um, lacking the way, saying thanks, and then can we have some more? And then per pupil expenditures, again, this is something that's posted to the DESI website. DART, which stands for something, District Allocation Resource Tool. That's what that stands for. And so you can see where um, we stack up in terms of pure per people expenditure. Belcher Town, um, now, of course, some of this is because there are so many more students, right? So the expenditures are distributed over a much larger student body. Belcher Town, I'm going to guess is probably closer to eighteen hundred students. Um, Amherst, of course, is a much larger district, um, but um, yeah, so you see where we stack up. Uh, and then, you know, I'll address, and Chris and I can kind of quickly address the elephant in the room of like, wow, we've had that increases for the past few years that have been, you know, under three percent. Now this one, right now, looks like it could be three point seven five. We are very, very early in the game. So the timeline, which you have access to in February, and I'm sure later when people are giving out reports, uh, Joyce will even have more information about this. But in February, Chris and I will go before the finance committee, FinCom and Town, um, talk with them. Ultimately, the select board and the, and FinCom will give, provide a feedback. Perhaps they'll be required to provide us some parameters, given the priorities that the town has, given their revenue picture. Um, and Chris and I will continue to monitor where we can, um, what adjustments we can make. And as things change, so always in January, it's early times. What Carolyn, the town administrator, asked for in early January is please give us your department's numbers for a level services budget to maintain level services, what would you need? Um, this is our snapshot in January. These things are subject to change. And we are always, always, always working to make sure that we are as responsive and responsible as we can be to a town that is very generous and kind to us. Certainly, if you have any questions, Chris or I could answer them.
Thank you, Annie and Chris. Uh, and thank you for taking us through um, the detail. I feel well-informed and um, and I'm, I'm glad we're on time with these uh, the, the town's request. Any questions for Annie or Chris about this? Now, Annie, um, you don't need us to vote on this. We, we need to present it to the town, arrive at a final number, and that vote takes place somewhere closer to um.
Probably March. So, so by law, so please put on your calendars, May second, right? Uh, that is uh, annual town meeting, Thursday, May second. Please come out and support uh, the town, the budget, the school department budget. Uh, we will do, we will advertise in the paper and have the public hearing of the budget, probably at our March meeting, because in that, in that outside chance that we don't get a forum, that still leaves us for April, right? You have to have a public hearing, that vote that's advertised in the paper before the school department budget can go to town meeting in May. But we'll keep updating you after we meet with FinCom or whenever that, we'll come back again in February and you keep getting updates. And in March or no later than April, we'll have that advertised in the paper, school department budget. That's when you'll need to vote. And then that vote is what we, you know, hopefully that's our budget and hopefully local contribution and that the lineup.
Very good. Joyce.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you. And I have appreciated the school committee beyond means of what Dr. Mackenskey and all of you have done for the town um, in returning any type of money or whatever you've done. Um, I truly appreciate you and all your hard work. Um, we had our first blush of the uh, fini-, with the finance committee last week. We will continue forward. Many of the things that came up was that we will meet again, or you will meet again with FinCom, uh, Chris and uh, Dr. Mackenzie. Um, and moving things forward with whatever. And we opened the town meeting warrant, so there, that is available. If you have anything that needs to go on to the warrant, uh, please send that in to us. I attended the MMA meeting this past weekend, Friday, Saturday. And of course, you know, Governor Healy, Kim Driscoll, they all have their lieutenant governor had their things about monies that are, they're asking for to be put into the budget, hopefully for schools and roads and things of that nature. So hopefully there might be something. We don't know uh, what their final outcome will, will be once they present it to the House and the Senate. Um, so again, we always look forward to that to see what comes to us. Um, and we'll just go forward, but always do look forward to working with you. You're such a workable group. I thank you for all that you do. So thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. It means a lot. Um, we love working collaboratively with the town and have felt very, very supported. And uh, thank you. Thank you for those kind words.
I did have
Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, I did have, through my grapevine, I heard that the Chinese charter school has started the process to buy half of the national evaluation systems uh, building up at the North Maple Street uh, campus up there. So I will keep my ear to the ground uh, to see how that goes through, if that goes through. So it looks like they are trying to expand also. So I'm not sure how that will affect us or any other surrounding towns around us, but it looks like they're looking to um, do more with their uh, education program also. So just to, we'll just keep that in the loop and I'll keep you informed.
Thank you, Joyce. Annie, do you know if um, if there's a limit on their enrollments, that they've been putting a cap on it, that, that our students have applied and not gotten in? Or has it been, any student who's applied has gotten into the Chinese charter school?
So there is something in the laws for charter schools that does, there's a certain point at which a charter school may not be able to accept students from a town. There is a threshold of, I think it's percentage of percentage of budget to charter school. So when I bring back that additional, that, I'm not remembering exactly, but there is a, there's a time and, and it can change then, if, if enrollments fluctuate, but I'll make sure I have this specific, what that is and when it happens. Um, because it has happened for Hadley. Although it doesn't happen a lot, but it has happened for Hadley.
Great. Thank you for coming back to us with that. Paul?
Yeah, on that, I mean, they tried several years ago. They tried twice, right, to expand their enrollment and somehow was it DESI was not authorizing it? I don't remember the details. I know they tried once, it didn't work, and then they tried again.
Yeah, yeah. So because charters, expansions and other things, they're approved through a separate arm of the Department of Ed. I'm not sure. There could be a gazillion reasons, right? There could have been something in the charter application that the department said, yes, looks good, but we just need this piece tightened up. It could be, you know, that they could have determined some degree of saturation in a particular area. I uh, I don't know. And that isn't in my ruby and little charter primer, but now you have me curious. So perhaps it will be added.
You do.
Functional annex.
Thank you for bringing it up, Joyce. And Annie, if you could, if you could figure that out and bring back some information for us to just consider, that would be helpful.
I would like to ask though, does seem that we've had a considerable jump of choice uh, in students. It, it seems like we're at the highest level since.
And they may, they may only want the building for uh, more classrooms and not necessarily increasing their, their student population. Maybe they just want the building. It's only half of the building that they're looking at, not the whole building uh, where the national evaluation system is. So you know, splitting that building and still letting a national evaluation system stay there and using the other half over there. So then maybe they're just looking at expanding their programs for the population that they already have. Um, I don't know their semantics or why they're doing it, but that's, that's what I've heard, is that they're interested in the building itself.
Interesting.
And we are, uh, so our school choice is really, really high. And that's, that's wonderful. And of course, we're hoping, I also have to bring back to you folks those NASDAQ projections, right? Because we love school choice. It's wonderful. It helps us, as you can see, as our school choice increases. We can apply a greater share to the budget. Recognize that we use those revenues and try to help out the town. But um, ultimately, the desire is that we also have greater foundation enrollment. So that's what drives chapter seventy.
Yeah. Well, two things. Why, why do you think we have such a bump? And then just remind me, so those choice in folks, I'm just thinking of I know this is not dollar for dollar, but if you amortized it per student, the cost was, what was it, eighteen thousand dollars per student roughly? And um, but yet choice in folks are five thousand dollars from the contributing town. It might, is it proper to think of those numbers similarly, or is it?
Yeah, it really, it really isn't. And here's why. And I also had some more of like intervals and drafts. I won't work, Chris and I will not bore the world with like advanced course of chapter seventy. That's an excellent question. People always think that and I should have seen that, especially with that last line. So actually, you know, if, if our enrollment is, they look at foundation enrollment and then look at kind of what, what's happening in terms of our expenditure. And I do have to double check this. Of course, you can correct me. If, when they do the per pupil expenditure, if they're using our actual enrollment or if they're using our foundation enrollment to come up with that, I have to double check that. But in the absence, if we didn't have school choice, I mean, think about, boom, that revenue is just But in the absence, if we didn't have school choice, I mean, think about boom, that revenue is just gone. And the presence of those students, so you guys can help me this. Oh, you can help me to say this better. So if, if that's school choice student isn't there, even if those 124 students aren't there, as you can see, they're distributed across multiple grades. If they're not there, where's the corresponding decrease in expense? We don't turn down the heat. We don't probably lay off a teacher. We don't. If a student requires a one-to-one or that kind of support, we're getting that through special ed increment. So we're not incurring that cost of funding. So that headcount leads, right? There rarely is a corresponding, if there were 124 students and they were like, boom, they were all in this in middle school. Okay. Well, if they go away, then yeah, there's a far fewer people, but they're distributed. So it really is just the game of that revenue. Does that make sense?
Well, we have the fixed costs of operating our school, the, the, the way it is. And additional money means we're able to spread that over more students. So our, our per pupil expense would be probably somewhere closer to Hatfield's 19K or perhaps even uh, Amherst 23K, uh, if we took away those, that school choice dollars, I, I would imagine.
Yeah. Do you have to verify? I don't know, Christie, if you knew the answer to that, if you started to say something, or maybe we should have to look it up. Is that on per pupil expenditure that they use? The, if they use foundation art, they use, um, actual uh, when calculating that for Dart, but, um, yes. So exactly those fixed costs, you're, 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 yeah, you're, you're still, you still have those fixed cost.
Right. Okay. So we are just keeping mindful of the time. Um, I'm going to ask for any last questions or comments about the budget, uh, before we move on. Okay, great. Annie and Chris, thank you so much. We're going to, uh, uh, look forward to the follow-up discussion, uh, later in the following weeks. Uh, moving next to the first reading of the revised BEDH Public Participation at School Committee Meetings Policy. And the public speak signup form, uh, Ethan and Christine.
Thank you all. I'm going to make sure Christine is in on this. Um, this is a revised, uh, version of the participation form. Or let's see, uh, something we worked on for a couple of months, made a bunch of kind of small changes along the way. Um, being conscious of, and really the big thing that we added is the, the form that you guys also have access to. Um, I think we were thinking a lot about the experience at the beginning of the pandemic. And if we ever were to see a big influx of people at our meetings again, um, making sure that everybody had a voice. Um, and that people could sign up ahead of time. So if they wanted to speak, they could speak. So that way, um, they, that if someone really wanted to be able to get in front of the audi, uh, of the school committee, they would have the opportunity to sign up ahead of time. Um, and then as whoever was the chair, who Mary, you're currently the chair, you'd have the ability to, as you can see, um, have made some changes if necessary, a lot, uh, uh, leading up to a meeting. If we had a big influx of students or students of people that wanted to speak. Um, and then also, uh, a little bit in terms of the amount of time that's allowed um, for both speakers, depending on the number of speakers that are, uh, in the queue. Christine, what did I miss?
I think the only other, um, when they sign up, we ask about their residency and, uh, you know, if they're, um, i- if they're not from town, if they don't have a child within the school system, that way, you know, that uh, they not speak essentially that we, we reserve the right for our parents. Uh, and not for people who are looking to create issues. Um, obviously, again, we were just looking at the pandemic as an example of what we want going forward.
Just, uh, one point of clarification there is that they could still speak, right? So one of the reasons about asking about organizational affiliation is nationwide and in Massachusetts. There are folks who feel very strongly about certain things. They may have no relationship to this school. They have a relationship to an issue. For example, think of book banning. So this just requires people to kind of state their connection perhaps to a particular group that may be using a public meeting of a democratic body to advance a policy agenda, but it just allows kind of knowledge of what somebody stake in a particular issue on agenda. They do want to underscore, there's nothing that prevents, although it does allow, it assumes that public speak is, you know, this is limited to a, um, three minutes, um, five people, 15 minutes, but the chair, school committee always has the right to extend that should they choose.
Thank you. I think the, this guideline and the form is very helpful. Um, I really appreciated reading through the, the, how we budget for the timing, um, and that we keep it to 15 minutes unless there's something, um, that warrants extending that. It's nice to get a heads up, um, about a given topic that's going to come up. And this is first reading, so we have another month for second reading before we, but a couple of comments that I will share is, I noticed that one, there's only one question in the form that is required, um, and which is the email. And I wonder if we would want to have, uh, other things required. That's a question that I have a wondering. Another, uh, is, um, the framing of the last, um, uh, question, topic you would like to present. It almost seems like we're inviting a presentation or like that's allowed. So maybe reframing to, uh, something, the topic that you'd like to comment on or, or something along those lines, using the word, you know, co-comment. But I, I think this is a terrific, um, tool and I look forward to, uh, to keep using it. And I, just as you were speaking, I was thinking, okay, so in practice, once this goes into effect, we would be checking the form and that would and that would determine the queue and first come, first serve. Uh, and then if there was anyone who just arrived to the call wishing to make comment pending time availability, we would call on them next.
Yeah. And I think, I think we're just kind of thinking along the lines of if we ever had to go beyond that 15 minutes that we kind of are tied to, if we thought enough people in the queue that you and, and the school committee as a whole would know ahead of time, like, all right, we've got 20 people that want to comment. Then you know, like, we're going to have, you, you can announce here, we're going to have a little bit more time committed to public comment than we normally would because of the number of the people that signed up.
Right. The other thing I would love for us to think about is once this goes into effect, if, if this goes into effect, once it goes into effect, how will we get the word out? Is there an expectation on people's parts that they show up for public speak? Or do we, you know, what, what are the ways that we get the word out that there is this new process? I don't have the answer to that, but I'd like you to begin thinking about it.
And I offered to that really quickly. I was just going to say, just very quickly, is that nobody can get on these meetings without going to agenda to get the Zoom link? So I think we could at first initially just find people, if you expect to speak, you, please do the following.
Great idea. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
All right. Any other questions about the, um, this uh, new proposed policy in the form?
I just said, I really appreciate you all putting that together and I appreciate that. The narrative roles, I think those are really helpful. I, I must admit, I just logistically, I struggle with the form. Um, I'm fundamentally in public discourse, something like that. If I'm going to request information, I want to make sure it, it would do something with it. And I'm not sure what I would do with some of that information about affiliation, uh, town, uh, what they're going to present on. It's not actionable for me if I know that beforehand. They can speak if they get time, they can speak regardless of affiliation and town and what they're going to present on. So I, I don't know if we need to request that. And then I also just logistically, if I'm on the call, somebody makes a point, I'm like, oh, I'm going to make a point. And do I, you said humorous, then I just raise my hand and then I get to speak.
You, you raise your digital hand and then you're in the queue. If there are, you know, two people who got the form, they would, they would get priority because they had put in that effort. And then we would go next to whomever had their hand raised.
I just worry if one like this is not going to be followed and it might be more of a headache than, you know, we could, we, we could take a poll at the beginning of the meeting. Hey, who wants to talk? If you want to talk, raise your hands, we'll put you in a queue now. Um, I get it if you're, you're worried that, not worried, but you're, you're thinking ahead of we do get an, another long list of, of folks, given that we're not getting anybody coming, it seems like, uh, but it's, it's smart to think ahead. But I'm just wondering if there's a, I just worry that if we're going to have a form that folks aren't going to follow, we're going to have to constantly just be reminding them, hey, use the form. Got to use the form. Um, so is there another more efficient way that we just do it at the start of every meeting?
I, I could see a scenario where this is, the form is a helpful tool for us, but if people showed up and raised their digital hand, we wouldn't turn them away. Um, and I could also see a scenario where, uh, this form, uh, gets used when there is a really, uh, when there's something like the pandemic and we're preemptively looking ahead. What we are reading about in the, in the paper is that other school committees are getting um, deluged by comments from people who are not even from a town. I think it's helpful for us to know that, okay, there's 50 people asking for public comment, 25 of them are from Florida. I think it's just helpful, useful, useful information that gives you an idea of, okay, should we just increase public comment to an hour and a half to account for that? Some school committee meetings go till midnight on the eastern side of the state. Do we, we, we might want to allow for that if there's a important enough topic. But I think by and large, we're not going to encounter that, uh, it'll just help, be helpful in management under those extreme circumstances, I would imagine.
We, I think, our thinking was also that, you know, um, if there were 10 people and five were from an organization not associated with the school, that the parent, you know, we would know that, okay, this is a parent of a child, they, they should be able to speak. Um, you know, maybe a group can get together and appoint one speaker because they're all, if they're all making the same point, but you know, we don't want parents to feel like they're not being heard because people, you know, with an agenda are taking over our meeting. That's all.
And, and I'll, and I'll make it even simpler. I think, I think where, where it originated from was if we have public comment, we have 15 minutes, right? So if 10 people want to, six people want to comment, that means somebody gets left out, right? If everybody uses their three minutes. And so if we know there's a, any topic, right? It could be any topic that comes up that 20 people, 10 people, six people want to speak. This gives us the opportunity for Numer, whoever the chair is to say, all right, we need to, we need to, uh, make public comment a little longer. And again, I did, on some level, it's just kind of a planning thing like, all right, guys, like, we're going to have a 30-minute public comment because 10 people signed up for a public comment. It just gives us a little bit of like foresight moving forward of like, hey, if we're going to have 100 people that want to do public comment. Yes, to your point, Paul, I, I, I agree with you. Like some of that data isn't necessarily usable, but it also gives us a sense of like what the meeting might look like so that we're not saying, all right, we're going to meet 5:30, 7:00 and then we get off at 11:30 at night.
Yeah, that's bad. Those are all good. Do you see that form being at the beginning? Like folks could log on and then sign up?
That one would be available on the agenda as soon as the agenda is posted. I mean, it, it's going to be something. And that, I think that's one of the things we talked about was that when the agenda is posted, whenever it is posted, that, 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 that Google signup would be right next to the, to the, to the Zoom link when it, on the agenda, like. So that, that it's, it's there so that people see it. And again, to your point, yeah, some people are going to ignore it that, and again, public comment is going to happen regardless. Um, but it does give us an opportunity to say, all right, these people signed up ahead of time. We're going to give them priority at the beginning of public comment, and then you'll also have the opportunity to speak.
Yeah. I guess you go to a meeting, you do sign up often. Put your name down in a signup sheet and this is, I guess I didn't think about this, so you put it down there as, as when I log on, if I didn't know about this, but suddenly somebody makes a comment. I want to respond. I can put my name in the queue through that form.
Yeah. And I would just remind you, that's exactly before COVID, right? I mean, that in person, people signed up to speak at a school committee meeting. And when they step up a town meeting floor to speak, say their name, they say their address. Again, that has to do with voting, but to your point about this is a public democracy. I think, I think these are great questions. It wasn't our goal to like try to stifle this. It was our goal for people to potentially, we can, this hasn't happened here. So part of it is like, why worry about it? What you don't want to do is start making rules constraining public comment after public comment has gone. Right? That's not when you want to do it because then it appears that you may be trying to shut down speech. That's frustrating to you.
Yeah.
Um, so, so that's some of it too, of like, should people know if someone is actually what their connection is to the taxpayers account?
Right. And Jo- Joyce, hang on one second. I'll call on you, uh, in a moment, but Paul, Annie's point was a really good one about people are going to go anyways to the Google Doc to get the Zoom link to log in. And if it's, if there's a visible, uh, statement of want to make public comment, sign up here to get in the queue. That could be a very easy way that you, you know, you're going to come anyways. You, you just, you know, you put your, your, your hat, you know, your, your name in the queue, uh, that way. But again, I think that this is something that we are sort of intelligently planning ahead in the event that anything like this would be useful to us. If it doesn't work for us, we don't use it. So, and most days, like I would, we didn't have anyone coming to comment, uh, it's just going to be a non-issue. Joyce.
Are you okay? Please be a mode.
If, if you had a really controversial thing come, coming up on your agenda. And I'm going to use East Hampton as a, uh, an example. So they really had quite a time there where they were zooming and they had, um, so many people waiting in the queue to get into the meeting that it just wasn't fair to everybody that wanted to get onto that agenda and be part of that, participate in that certain topic. So if you have a certain topic of such source, I'm not sure what would come up, um, here in Hadley, but you never know. That it would almost behoove you to have an open meeting and have a public forum, um, on a certain topic. And not have to have it in a Zoom where people wouldn't have that opportunity to speak, or you feel like they need to file a application to get onto your meeting. If it's that big a deal, if it's that big of a deal, then you really need to have an open forum. It is, is what I'm thinking because you wouldn't ever want to set yourself up to the mess that they had over there at East Hampton, because that was a, pardon my language, a shit show. Um, and, and we're not like that in Hadley. We would want to make sure that everybody is heard or whatever, not have to sit there and not have that opportunity to, you know, uh, apply themselves or speak for themselves or whatever might come up. And I mean, that would be my only solution to any big thing, controversial thing. So I don't know.
That's a very good suggestion. And I believe, uh, during the pandemic, Paul hosted a, an open forum. I believe, I remember Stacy Mashinsky took notes, really great pro and con notes. And, and there was some really important dialogue that happened there. I think it was on Zoom because we were not in person. But be it on Zoom or in person, a public forum is a great, uh, avenue if we ever know we're going to have such a situation. Thank you for.
Thank you. So I think that, you know, that was actually part of our thinking when we talked about having people sign up. That gives us a heads up of how many people, you know, if you ha, if all of a sudden we see there's a long list of people signed up. And there's, um, you know, something going on that we need to do or make changes, uh, to how we do, how we have our meeting. That gives us enough time to make those decisions because we'll have, you know, we'll already know that there's an awful lot of discussion that needs to be had, um, because people have actually signed up to talk. I think that was part of our thinking too, was that's how we could almost gauge whether or not, you know, we were going to have a large amount of, you know, feedback coming at us, so.
And whether we should modify the agenda preemptively to, to, uh, to accommodate and, uh, in honor, but make space for that. Makes sense.
Just one more comment and kind of goes to Paul, your, your comment about the, the, the Google, the Google form and what's being asked. Um, something to note, um, number three is again, speakers must be in their remarks by stating their name, town or city of residence and affiliation from that. It is also, I mean, I don't remember everyone doing that in, in, in a lot of the public comment we did. So that is something that's been added as well. Something that's been added as well, and that kind of jives with what we're asking in the Google form, so that's also something to consider. As we head toward the second reading as well, cuz that would be a new ask of 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 the the people that are doing public comment.
All right, well, you've given us a lot to, yes.
Sorry, I just, I I really liked the conversation in general, and I I also like the idea that it is a little bit more formal. Um, and announcing, you know, a little bit about yourself, where you're from and your affiliation. Um, and I really like the idea, and I just. You know, I think public comment, although probably pretty rare um for us to see this, you know, unless something more, I don't know. Outside of COVID um happens again, um, but making sure that people know that this is. This is. This is to help the um public, right, and not a punitive thing. That's my only concern is if if we go out announcing this, there's this new public column signup forum. I don't want people to think that we're trying to, that's not the intent, right? It's not the intent at all. Um, but just maybe preemptively letting them know that this is so we can ensure that your voices are heard. Can ensure that we can plan accordingly to that we are hearing you, right? And if we need to take it into another forum, that we, you know, we can do that, but I just, as a parent, just thinking back to some. People, public comment got a little. We just wouldn't want somebody to look at this and go, well, now they're trying to restrict. It's not the intent. So I don't know, however we put this out, maybe just making sure that it's. People, I don't know if they're gonna read it or not, right? Like, gonna read our policy or not, but they're gonna read that. We have a new thing and you have to sign up for a Google form, and I just wanna make sure it's um perceived in the light that it was.
A note to our policy team to further think about. Uh, the framing that we might use in the title of the form, as well as the uh when it's posted next to the Zoom link in the in the Google Doc. Uh, it could be something more like, we wanna hear from you. Get in the queue by completing the following information, so it's inviting and arms outstretched. I don't know, that's the perfect language, but go like, think along those lines, so it's less about a request to speak. That will be honored or denied, and more like, uh, well, this is the queue, you're just, you're you're stating your. Your interest and and we're welcoming you.
I think that's a helpful reframing, it's a signup sheet that you do, and then also at any public meeting we have, you have to state your name or you live, I mean that. As I said, the narrative you wrote is great, it was just more the logistics of the form, but this has been helpful, thank you.
Great.
All right, in the interest of keeping us moving, we will come back to that next month. Um, we are turning next to. Uh, another. Uh, policy item, uh, actually, I'm not sure if it is, it's it's actually uh the revision. Of the Hopkins Academy Code of Conduct um per Desi. Annie, do you wanna take us through that? So I'm gonna take you through, although you'll vote on them separately, um, the codes of conduct you can vote on together. Uh, C, D, and E. So what is happening here is we have our onsite uh visit from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Happens Thursday as part of. These are visits and audits that occur on essentially six-year cycles, although there's mid-years, I think every three years, things happening. Um, and what they do is there are a series of requirements and standards. Against which they audit every district um to ensure regulatory compliance. Um, what they have said to us, so we upload documents, they take a look at documents, and they say to us, hmm. Almost, but not quite, it actually needs to say this very specific thing. And there really is no discussion here. Uh, so the goal is to try to get as many of these things corrected before the. Report is published in the spring. Now, after a report is published, there is time for corrective action, there will be things that they tell us we need to correct. But it's nice to get as many of them done before they publish the report. So, for example, in C, um, they would like to see um what we currently have. And you can see what's currently in our discipline, so um. What is unchanged in the code of conduct, uh text removed is crossed out, text added is highlighted and in bold. Like the language from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, what you will see in both C. And if you were to click on D, because they're related, also revisions to the code of conduct. Slightly different, um, this really is underscoring, there's there's been a slight change to one of the discipline laws. This comes up frequently, I know. Parents ask us questions about, they don't understand why students can't just be. Suspended, get rid of them, get them out of here. Actually, the law is very clear, that you must. Employ alternative remedies and document said remedies. Prior to excluding child in school for disciplinary purposes, and the only time that you don't have to put those remedies in place. Is, and it's really key, students' continued presence in school would pose a specific, you have to say exactly what it would be, not something in general. Documentable concern about the infliction of serious bodily injury, in level of disruption. Very high standard for exclusion, very high, not a Hadley thing, state thing. To that end, we must have these things in our codes of conduct, saying that we adhere to this, which we do, we do restorative justice PBIS, all these other. But that's C and D are related. And um, asking you to take a look at those, and then asking, normally you write, this will go through several readings, but. It's really in our best interest to have these things corrected before a report is written. Um, and uh finally, in the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, the addition of. A paragraph that is in your agenda in italics, simply adding that. I have said, I can answer any questions, I've set these out as two separate motions, one as the revisions to the H A Code of Conduct. The first two are both in the H A Code of Conduct, and um. Then the approval of revisions to the bullying prevention. I'd like to try to treat this as a block, uh C, D, and E, so any questions about um. The uh the language, the text, uh the spirit of revising the code of conduct. Or the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. Okay, hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve? Uh, the changes to the code of conduct, uh and the revisions to the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan.
All moved?
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
I think Ethan got me there.
All right, great, thank you, Annie, for bringing this to us, and onward to the superintendent report. I'll be quick and happy, uh, some of these things we've talked about, really wanna highlight, Linux uh asked, the Linux superintendent said to me, can we visit Hopkins? Heard good things, and we wanna learn some things, so the team from Linux came out. And uh, here's what I love, the faculty commented on how welcoming our students and staff were. How well behaved our students were, I'm not surprised by that at all. The lack of cell phones, they did not see a single one, which they were like, wow, what is this place, the hallways are so quiet. Um, and the helpfulness of all the students who did some focus groups for them, and they visited classrooms, so thank you, Linux, for coming, and thank you. Hopkins Academy faculty, staff, and students for hitting the ball out of the park, no wonder the choice numbers are so high. Uh, CPAC, big thank you to parent Felicia Seymour for her willingness to assist her spouse. Coordination that they have with CPAC is backed and full force, revitalized, it's great. Haven't seen this level of enthusiasm since our own parent was leaving the charge there. Uh, I told you about the tiered focus monitoring review, they'll be here on Thursday. Restorative justice training, wonderful, I participated in this for two days last week, now we have. A large cohort of faculty at Hopkins, very large. Trained in intensive restorative justice interventions, that means they can facilitate harm repair, they can act as kind of. Community support people, so this is just fantastic. Uh, our international students from France, looks like the May date is on. So there is a flyer that's linked in the superintendent report, any families who are interested in. Cohort of students uh with Frontier Regional High School. We will be updating or upgrading our internet web filter, more to be revealed, sounds super exciting, that's really important, and I'll have. Uh, what direction we're going in, and Park and Rec is uh taking up. Kind of where we used to have the five K with Helping Hearts, Park and Rec is doing the hot dog five K. So there's a flyer there on April seventh, please think about, I mean, they got me a hot dog, it's really not gonna move, I'll move fast for a hot dog, so maybe they'll get me involved in the whole thing. Once I have the hot dog, I will not be running. And that's it for my report. Great, thank you, any questions for Annie? All right, excellent, thank you very much. Moving on to the business manager report, Chris, are you there?
I am, my camera, there we go. Okay, so I have a lot for you tonight, I apologize, but there's a lot of information.
Can I ask you a favor, is it just me? Can you make sure that your share access on that report is anyone with a link? And people here can refresh it.
I did link it to the.
You gotta make the the access public. I was able to access all three. You were, all three, but not what he's about to talk about now. Um, I was able to access the expense report, the revolving account. He's gonna give you an overview of what's going on with the DER project. What I do there on that link, Chris, what you wanted to. And click on share. Click on the link once it's, once your document is open, when you're in your document, you wanna click on share. And then just go to the bottom and click on anyone. And then we'll have to refresh after you've done that.
What, what is going on? Why, why are you not on? What are you doing?
I've refreshed, but still no access.
I've got access to it.
You do? Were others able to access the link? I got it now, did you refresh yours? I did. Oh, now, now it's here, yep, great.
My apologies, I actually just finished this just before the meeting. We had a number of phone calls today regarding this, so this information is is pretty new. So first of all, I I can update you on the DER project. Um, you know, the RFQ went live in December, I have reported that at the last meeting. Um, there was no talk about pricing during the walkthrough, we had a walkthrough on January fourth. Um, went through the boiler room around the school, uh showed them the locker rooms, the gym. Uh cafeteria, because those are more difficult, uh you know, heating areas. Uh, we took a rock walk outside the building, so they could just see the grounds and. Kind of get a concept of where they might put uh the wells in the ground. And we had a question and answer session afterwards, and I did ask them, you know, what they thought of the pricing that we had. Nobody really had anything to say at that point in time, but then after. That meeting, uh I got emails from a few vendors. Uh, basically letting us know that the two hundred and fifty thousand we had was too low um for the scope of the project. But they could do what's called a concept design rather than the full full-blown construction plans. So I didn't really want to comment on that until we heard from Eversource on if that would even be something they could use for their TA study. Um, and we actually had a meeting this morning with them. They said that uh something like this, uh you know, a detailed concept design would work for their needs. Excuse me, um, that is something that, um, as I was told by one of the vendors, it's about fifty to sixty percent of the final design. Um, and it can be used for to estimate the cost of the project, which is important, uh obviously for us as well as to Eversource. And I think the most important part was that. A detailed cons uh concept design can be used to prepare the final uh construction documents, so, um, you know. They they basically are, you know, more than halfway done, they would take that and just continue on from that point with the uh additional. Detail and documents that were needed for the final construction plan. Excuse me, one vendor I spoke with today said, um, two hundred and fifty thousand would cover the concept design. And it would probably be about another hundred thousand to complete the construction plan design work, so. Um, again, I I really just had to wait until Eversource even gave that the okay before I could comment um. To the vendors on this, and obviously, I wanted to bring it to your attention tonight as well. There was also the concept of um test wells, and I was asked at the walkthrough if um. Test wells were included in um the amount that we were paying them, or if we were going to handle that. On a separate basis, uh again, the original thought was that they would handle. Something like, you know, test wells, because that's going to aid them in the project, but. It seemed to be a a pretty popular question, uh and it seems that, you know, if we have numerous. Vendors telling us that our amount was too low, and numerous vendors asking if that too low amount also includes test wells. Which we were given an estimated cost today by Eversource of about ten to twenty thousand dollars. It it's just something that I I wanted to discuss with you. Uh, tonight, the third aspect, and this really hasn't been discussed, but. The dollar amount of projects over a three-year period um affect the school building. I did speak with the town building inspector, and he told me that. If a building has renovations priced at more than thirty percent of the assessed value of the building, that building needs to be brought up to code. Obviously, in a building as old as Hopkins, there there's a lot of cold items there, so. Uh, the building's value is currently assessed at sixteen million dollars, thirty percent of that would be four point eight million dollars in renovations. If we take the cost of the DER, which was about three point eight million, the locker rooms was a thousand and six, I mean, a million and sixty-nine thousand. We also had the ceiling tiles scheduled to begin in February, another hundred and sixty-three thousand. We are over the four point eight million dollars. So. I did reach out to the state, I also sent this to our attorney, uh to see if there are any exceptions to the um. To the law, I also asked the building inspector, and I ran this by the uh the attorney as well. A good portion of the cost of this project is going to be the wells outside of the building. And because the wells are outside, I'm wondering if they would be included in the cost, so. That might be um a loophole, I did ask. Eversource today, and they said it was an interesting question, they didn't know. Um, I asked the building inspector, and he really wasn't sure either, so. I'm at the state level at this point, and with our attorney, I haven't heard back yet, but um. My fingers are crossed on this, I mean, my my thinking is it's kind of the same as if we paved the parking lot, you know, and it was expensive or something. It's really not changing the value of the building, so. Um, you know, we're kind of hopeful that we'll be able to kind of find our way around that and still be able to do all the projects, but. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Chris, comment on this, we're also, we we have a ten-year plan underway. And uh, in year one, that project alone is, gets nowhere near the thirty percent, in year two, that project alone doesn't get near the. Thirty percent, at what point do we start aggregating years and projects to to try to stack it up against that thirty percent, you know what I'm saying?
Well, it's a sliding three-year period, so, you know, as. Right now, it would be, say, you know, the last two years plus this year, then moving forward, it would. Eliminate one year, and and it just keeps sliding forward with the three most current years. Um, so. Uh, again, it it's a little bit tricky with this, because there are certain exemptions which. Even finding the law, and I don't know if you've ever read a law, but my god, um, I mean. I don't know if they do it on purpose or not, but reading some of these things, and then reading it again and saying, I I got something different the second time I read it, so. I did send it along to the attorney, I'm sure she can read it a heck of a lot better than I can, um. Because it did list exemptions, but then it was only for certain things, and. And it was only for certain portions of the law that it would be exempt to, so. Um, but you know, a- again, details are still kind of uh waiting to be received on that. I basically, I will do everything I can to. I, basically, I will do everything I can to, you know, try to make it so that we can comply with that without doing a full-blown of code upgrade. The other question that I would have on it is that, say, for example, with the locker rooms, that project will be brought up to code. So since that project will be bringing, you know, will be entirely up to code, will that be exempt from the total? Again, these are the goofy things that go through my mind when I lay down at night, so basically, I, you know, these, they're all things I could be dead wrong, but I'm hoping that somebody might say, you know, that's a good thought. You're right, we, we don't have to include that, so. You know, again, as I get information, I can certainly keep you up to date on that. You just go back to what else I have in the notes, so. Basically, there, there's a few things that I wanted to discuss with you tonight. The first was a discussion and, and vote on whether or not you want to go with the concept design versus the full-blown construction plans. There are some advantages for the concept design. The first is that it's, it's a lower initial cost than the full construction documents, so if we were to do just the concept design, we would, we wouldn't be paying the full amount, because it, it seems unlikely that we're going to get these full documents for the amount that we put in the, in the specs. If we find out, for example, after the TA study is done, that this is not going to be a $3.8 million project, and it's actually going to be, I'm just making up a number, but a $5.8 million project or something like that. And, or if the TA study comes back and says, you know, now that we did the deeper dive on this, your savings are going to be considerably less. At least we haven't spent all the money on the full construction documents, and we could stop right there, you know, if it wasn't going to work. The other aspect is, of course, it can be utilized as part of the full construction documents, so we would be, you know, 50 to 60% done at that point. And I think the biggest one of all is that, I, I mean, I know one, one vendor just said they weren't even going to submit because of the pricing limitations. They said it just isn't enough. We're not going to submit, and so I think if we, if we change it to a concept design, we would get more RFQ submissions with, with, you know, with the pricing that we included in there than if we left it with the full-blown plans. So that was the first one. Kind of piggybacking off of that is as part of combines, which I needed to list this project on, I needed to list an approximate price, so. I mean, there's no way around it. You have to list it. And, you know, we were told that an average fee for design work would be 6 to 7%. The project was $3.8 million, so I took 6.5% of that, which is a little less than 250,000, thinking, okay, you know, we're, we're in the ballpark. It seems, and Eversource told us this today, that because this is just not your typical project, I mean, there's there's just different curveballs that can be thrown at a designer, you know, they, they drill a wall and hit asbestos, or, or, you know, or the, the, the wells, you know, have very difficult to drill through bedrock or something underground. All of that could, could sway the, the prices either way, and so I think that's why they're a little bit nervous about the price that we have listed, so, you know, it's those two items together. I'm, I'm really open to discussion on this from you, your opinions, your thoughts, to see how best to move forward with it. We also have a test well question as well, but I, that's kind of separate than this, so. You know, just any, any thoughts or comments you have, we would appreciate them.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris?
All right, I'll say I'm okay if we go to conceptual design. Eversource is okay with it. I would leave in the test well and maybe make it an optional, just because I'd want their assessment of the potential costs of that. Right? Otherwise, we'd have to rebid a test well separately or pay for that.
We'd, we'd have to get three quotes for that.
Yeah, so can you put it as an optional task and see what these, because would these folks do the, that as well?
Eversource would like a test well done, you know, it makes their TA study a little bit better. It, it certainly helps in terms of the design aspect as well, because, and, and again, this is all kind of new to us, but i- in speaking with various people throughout the day, you may end up where we need to drill 1,000 feet down. But if we drill deeper, we might need less wells than if we drilled, you know, less deep, so. There's a lot of aspects to consider, and a test well would be important to have, whether or not we pay for it or the designer pays for it is a different story. There's two benefits to that. I mean, if we pay for it, the designer's not going to tack on their overhead and profit to the cost, so gonna save us a couple thousand dollars there. If the designer does it, it might be something where we would have to add that to what we pay them, you know, keep it as a separate item. And just say, okay, you know, bill us for the test drill and we will pay it. So it, it's really, it, it's, it's up to you guys how you would like to handle that, but I, I think it is important to have a test well drilled.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just questioning, just from a logistical procedural standpoint, can we just a- ask them to bid it out as an optional task? And so we have their cost assessment. We can then determine whether we want to bid it out ourselves. And you're saying even if we go down to just conceptual design, the 50 to 60% specs, that is still going to be pushing up to the 250?
That's what I was told, yeah.
I mean, if you're willing, if you can amend the RFP now, I would add in the wells, just to get a sense of that, and, and then if you think we can go out on our own and, and do that separate process. I just think it's always easier to have one contractor than manage multiple subs or something.
No doubt, yeah, there's, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah.
It might, I, I mean, and I, I'm not trying to get out of doing it by any means, but it might be quicker. Yeah. If the contractor does it just because of the fact that I have to get three quotes for that. Right. They won't have to. So it's a little bit speedier as far as that goes.
And then I would even, I would leave in the cost. I wouldn't make it price negotiable. Don't you think, Chris? I mean.
Can we do this? Can, can we do it so that you, we, we imagine we approved the full amount, but after the conceptual, there was a go-no-go decision. And if we, if we, if it was go, then the same entity would go the, the full amount. So so this way, we're not doing two rounds of RFPs, and we, we're not having a vendor that's coming back and jacking up the rate.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, there's, there's a, a big benefit to that, because it would be hard to find a designer that would take somebody else's work and then say, oh, sure, we'll take this, assume it's all right, and just move forward. You know, they're gonna want to start from scratch, so.
And the first one.
Have to write.
First one has us by the ball. The first one has us by the ball, if we don't, if we don't lock in the rate and the, the plan, but if we do it in a tranchway, like a, you know, phase one and phase two.
Sure. Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense.
Building in the well, it, it just, it's gonna make things a lot easier. They get their own people, they get their, their answers quickly from their own people. And it keeps you from having to do three, three bids, so I, I.
And so I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Would we pay the designer the extra for the test well, or that would be absorbed by their fee that they're getting? You know, would they bill us extra for it, or?
I don't understand. So you're, are you saying that they have to keep it under a 250 cap if we put 250?
No, well, I mean, as the, as it says right now, it's a $250,000 limit, which I was told they can do the concept plan for that. You know, many vendors, I would say four or five of them asked about the test drilling and if we were going to pay for that separately, or if that was included. You know, we can certainly leave it in and just say, well, you know, we, we just gave, we, we tossed you the bone of, of, you know, just doing the concept plan. You eat the cost of the test drill, I mean. You know, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge amount, so we can certainly try that.
So I want to clarify, we're saying if we did do the, the whole thing, but in, in, in phases, then we would be putting an upper limit at 350, after which, and, and asking them to cover the cost of the wells itself. So now there's a larger amount, and it's sort of all-inclusive, but we're asking them to first give us the concept design with the test wells. And that will, that'll authorize 250,000 of spending to accomplish that. We have all the data we need for Eversource to commit to, yes, you will be getting all of the incentives that we outlined, which gives us the assurance that our, our rebates from Eversource and our rebates from the federal government will be what they, what we think they will be, we'll have that certainty. And if, if they come back with data that says it won't be that, and we have different numbers, and we want to back away from this project, then we're out 250,000. But if we.
That is correct.
But if we do want to, we, we like what we see, we're, we, the incentives line up, then we just simply pay another $100,000 to get the full engineering design. And then we can start the project by selective vendor, start the project.
Now, and again, I, I just have to say this. It's not like they said, yes, 250,000 plus 100,000, you know, she, she tossed that out as, you know, I would say we could do this for the 250,000, and it'd be about another 100,000 for that, so. You know, I mean, i- if the price came in at 355 or something total, or 345, you know, I just, I want you to be aware that it wasn't like, that was a formal submission that they, that I was given. It was just a, this is, you know, this is what we can do.
And so, Chris, we have the ability now to amend the RFP that significantly, to add in a big separate task? Or two?
We can, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I did extend a little further down in the document. I extended the bid opening from tomorrow until February 6th, because I wanted to get, you know, your thoughts on how to move forward with this, so we have another couple of weeks. I scheduled another walkthrough on Wednesday. Because, you know, with the extension, there were some people that missed the initial walkthrough, so I scheduled another one for Wednesday morning, so they can come and check the building out as well, again, hoping to get as many submissions as we can.
Yeah, and then, and then, so then if that's the case, I, I think, I think Humira's got a good point, right? Let's, let's put it all into one RFP. Whatever, it's, it's the 50 to 60%, and then that's the concept design, and then to the construction plans, I guess it sounds like. I don't know what percentage of completion that gets you this, for the specs. And then the well, but it, I mean, Humira's right, right? You just do it in staged authorizations, where you only authorize this. And then, you know, however rewarded, that, you know, you don't proceed to that second task unless you're authorized.
Right, yep, okay.
I do think we'll get a much better, we'll get better bids, better quotes that way overall.
And the, the engineering. Oh, it's really great that we have a lot of interest. That's really positive.
Yeah.
I think the, the selection of the engineering design firm is really going to be key in like placement and like the, the, the systems that are used, and, and there are, I know there are some firms that have done this before. It's not new to them, and, you know, we want, I think because we are new in this, it would behoove us to have a firm that had more experience, and hopefully we're able to make that budget happen. I mean.
By me, Chris, who's advising us on the tax credit situation? Is that Eversource?
That might have been from Sarah Ross.
And we don't have a consultant now, a paid consultant who's professional, that's advising us on this.
She's not a paid, no.
No, I know Sarah. I'm saying we don't have a.
No, we don't, and I, I would just lay out this time, like, so that might help you think about when that makes a lot of sense. So right now, you take these, like you said, your stage authorization. Your detailed conceptual design, you provide that to Eversource. With that, Eversource can then do their technical assistance document, which will tell you the likely incentives that you would receive from Eversource. And they may speak only to Eversource, but at that point, at the same time, we'll also use that information to get general, not a full bid, but general cost estimates, because Eversource has said, it'd be really helpful if you took that detailed conceptual analysis. That's a project cost estimates that we could then incorporate into our TA study for you. At that point, when they're working on their TA, if we were looking for additional assistance with IRA, with federal incentives, it may make sense at that point to do that, just in, in terms of timing to then get that. And also, one thing that was brought to our attention today is that unanticipated cost escalation. So the example that they gave was, let's say you have to completely redo the electricity to carry the load. Then the incentives from Eversource do not increase with cost project escalation. They may from the federal government, but to your point, we would need somebody at that point in time to probably help us do that assessment. And also, Eversource won't cover any costs for this part, like the designs, there's no reimbursement or incentive for that. It may or may not be covered with the federal government. So I, I think you make an excellent point. We need somebody to help us and advise us. We don't have that person now. It could be as we move into TA. As in, the school committee can make a more informed decision, right, of here's the incentives we think that we're eligible for, and here are the projected total project cost. And I am saying school committee, because it starts with the school committee. However, the reality, as we all know, is this is passed to be done with the approval ultimately of the town. The town, you know, school committee doesn't have this money.
That's helpful. Thanks, Annie.
Okay, so in light of in light of this, I'm, I'm supportive that we increase the, the cost. What, what we really want to get to is data about and assurances on the incentives. So getting that conceptual plan with drilling data is really key for Eversource to, to, to give us that information. And so the fact that we can modify what you've already started and that we can take these leads that are hot and wanting to, to do the work for us and, and get a potential quote from them, I think we should move to increase that, that, that cost and, and make sure to build in those phases.
Okay. Sounds good. Is this something that requires a vote? I honestly, not really sure.
Annie, you're on mute.
If you're clear about all the adjustments that you're making, I would state them one more time aloud, exactly what you're doing. Somebody can move what you present and second it, which is to make sure it's reported exactly what all the committees.
And you're, you're saying, you're asking Chris to repeat it, or?
Yeah, so he doesn't understand, unless you want to say it, that's fine, but as long as somebody has a clear understanding, I think that's helpful.
I welcome Chris to say it.
Okay, so we will amend the RFQ to, to build it, build it in phases with the first 250,000 going to the detailed concept design. And an additional 100,000 for the finished instruction documents. If approved.
Where's the test well?
With the test well to be covered by the detailed concept design phase.
Yes, right. Test well covered in detailed concept phase, and it's covered by the designer?
The designer, but by the engineering firm. Do I hear a so move?
So moved?
And do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris, for taking us through that.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Okay, no, no problem, and I have an update on the locker room project as well. It's just on the next page of that report. So this went live last week. As of today, I have nine requests for the project specs. So I didn't send any out yet, because I did have a meeting with our athletic director and our gym teacher at Hopkins. With our athletic director and our gym teacher at Hopkins. Uh, just with the plans, we laid them out on a table. We looked at the plans that were done in two thousand nine. And they both just a- agreed that, wow, th- these plans are not what we want in the locker room. Um. So, okay, uh, that meant another curve ball thrown on these projects. Um. So I did reach out to uh, someone that we've used in the past. Uh, you know, that does this kind of stuff, and I just asked for. Um, I, I asked a few things. Number one, I asked if somebody would take the existing plans. And just kind of retrofit it after meeting with us to say, oh. We don't want this many showers in our new locker room. We have no need for them. We're going to replace that space with something else. And he said, well, you'd really have a hard time finding a designer that would be willing to do that. Um, kind of again, the same. The same thing with the DER project of nobody's just going to assume. That all the plans are correct. They might as well start from scratch if they're going to check them all, you know, so. Gave me an estimate of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars um, for the cost of the plans for the locker room. So I did post it everywhere. Um, you know, I can always pull it. I can just alert the people that, you know. Um, we're not going to do this right now, but, excuse me, I again, wanted to run it by you. Um. You know, looking at the plans, there's a number of things. There's, there's even some. Some current code items that were not included in the two thousand nine plan, so we'd certainly. Want to make sure that whatever work we did was compliant with today's codes. So uh, again, I'm, I'm open to questions or discussion on this, but. The plans that we have that, that we've, you know, had for years, just are not what, you know, what's wanted in a locker room. It's actually in some cases, kind of excessive, you know, and what I'm hoping is that um. You know, some of the savings we receive will, will certainly keep this project right on budget because. You know, the number of showers, for example, I mean, that's a lot of. It's a lot of plumbing work. It's a lot of cutting into the floors for drains. I mean, there's a lot of work installing showers and really. Kids don't use showers in a locker room like they used to, you know, I mean, they, they hop in the car and go home after a game and. Uh, I guess we're, you know, we're supposed to have a couple. I guess the refs sometimes like to shower. After a game before they go home, so they might use it. I, I wasn't even aware of that, but. Um, Eric and Fred both mentioned that that was the case, so.
Did anyone see an access from the gym into the girls locker room and not having to go out and around?
Yes, actually, I mean, we walk through, we have a whole list of, of things that we want. Um, in the locker rooms that, a- and you know, basically what we would do. Um, what I put in the specs is that, you know, the designer would first meet with us. See exactly what we want and go from there, uh, rather than, you know, using the existing plans, but. Again, you know, this is the school committee's decision. I'm just kind of letting you know where we stand with this project so far.
I have a question. Especially given the fact that we won't need as many showers, there won't need to be concrete cutting, uh, no, no additional plumbing. It, it, it seems, uh, what I'm hearing so far is cost removal, cost removal. I'm wondering if uh, we can build into the part of the bid that the. Uh, construction firm that selected will be working with us to do the designs. So, so basically, we just, it's a, make it an all-in-one. Uh, bid, and they're starting from scratch. They're not using designs that we have.
I honestly don't know if, if there are construction firms that do the whole thing from soup to nuts. Um. I can certainly reach out to some and ask, but I don't know if that's something they do or.
They work with their, they work with their subcontractors to do the, the design.
Yeah, that's, that's my guess, but again, I.
Because our upper, our upper limit is, is higher than what the project necessitates in light of the fact that we're removing all of this cost.
Yeah, I can see, um.
I also.
I, I just want to ask a question. Camara, I'm not sure. This would be an issue that I want to throw without. The vote at town meeting floor is for the construction of the locker rooms. We fold in the plans at the same time. Don't want to run afoul of what was authorized. We definitely want to make sure we check with the. Do you see what I'm saying? So what would happen if the money, if it costs less, is that money, the town would simply borrow less money? Do you see what I'm saying? If the plans weren't folded in. So we had plans to use school choice. Well, we thought our plans would be sufficient, so we didn't even say we were using school choice. We thought the plans would be sufficient. Um, and so we didn't, I just want to check the, what was voted on. So I just want to put that out there before and say it to Chris too. I want to make sure that.
Even if the, the cost of the engineer, uh, if the construction cost came down, but there was an engineering cost that was unanticipated. We could still cover the engineering cost with our school choice monies and the balance with the town. So that's accounting on our end. But the point is that we're leading with an RFP. We're already out there. There are nine firms. If, if half of them. Also regularly design, either, either through partners or in-house. Then we could make a selection and get started right away. And whatever bucket money comes, you know, we could, we could be copacetic with that when the time comes to pay the check. But at least we're getting out of the gate and getting started with the project.
And so if a construction firm cannot do both, then what do we do?
Then I think we are, uh. We're, we're probably going to need to get a, an engineering design firm. It'll probably, it, it may or may not be in time for this summer. We're probably, we're, you know, everything gets pushed forward. One RFP for engineering design firm, another for construction. We're not going to select the construction out of the nine. Everything gets pushed forward. Is, is, a- a- as far as I can see, uh, does someone else see it differently?
Okay, so I guess, so what I'm hearing is that you want. You want to look for a design firm that also is a general contractor? And then if we don't get any response, then we push the whole project back because we have to. Then go out to bid for a design firm and a separate contractor. Is that what? Am I, I just.
These contractors, whether or not they have in-house design abilities, or they partner with other design firms, we're, we're, we're working through the construction firm. To be the general contractor for all of it. And that's, that, that is a question. If not.
Have we ever used anyone like that? I, I'm asking, I, I don't know. Have we ever used anyone like that?
It's a design build company. I'm sure there's.
And they exist, sure. So, and if not, then you're coming back, Chris, next month and asking us for funding to do designs. And, and we're looking at pushing this out a year. Maybe that involves telling the town as well that we. I don't know if that we have to get an extension on the monies, but. I don't see any way around it. Do, is there an alternate scenario that I'm?
Um, I guess the only alternate scenario to, a- again, to keep things moving would be. If I could reach out to um, construction firms and just see, you know, reach out to a number of them and see, hey. You guys do this, or do you have everyone, you know, just bring you the designs or, you know, as an outside firm doing it? And if they don't, then I can go, you know, to, to, you know, we need to get separate plans done.
Right, that, that to me is the best case scenario is to. To see if one of our nine can do it in-house or even outsource it, but general contract the design and construction. That keeps our momentum going. Otherwise, you're coming back and asking us for. Seeking new engineering firm bids.
Right.
So we can cross our fingers and, and wait and see if the RFP that you modify gets us there.
I'm texting my father as we speak too, because he was a general contractor um, for large scale buildings, so. Um, just checking with him. He might be able to give me a quick answer, but uh. So, okay, um, I will certainly reach out. And uh, you know, see what I can come up with, but so, and, and, you know, if, if they can, that's great. If they can't. You want me to tell you at the next meeting or, or, you know?
Yes, tell us at the next meeting and then we'll move forward with. With that next step.
But will that push us back or no?
Yeah, of course, of, of course it will. It's, yeah, the best case scenario is that the partner that we pick is able to. Get this more simplified design done, which I don't see any reason why. At least a few of the nine wouldn't be able to, but we'll find out.
Sounds good, and. So just one, one other update. It's not on this list, but as a result of. All of this going on, we were going to have the ceiling tiles replaced with the suspended ceilings. Um, during February vacation and again during April vacation. Um, unfortunately, this was one of those things that hit me this morning. We were going to have a very small amount of space between the existing ceiling. And the suspended because of the windows that go all the way to the top of the classroom walls. And, you know, if you lower the suspended ceiling, obviously you're going to have to build something. To slant up so that it meets the top of the windows. It's a little more complicated. Um. And then it occurred to me that if we do the DER project, we're going to have ductwork and piping. Uh, you know, above the suspended ceiling. And what a disaster that would be to try to set all that up with the grids in place versus. Waiting, you know, until we have the ductwork in and then building the suspended ceiling around that. So I. Just in case you were wondering what's going on with that suspended ceiling project. Um, we had somebody lined up to do that. I'm going to just ask them if they can hold off and uh. Of course they can, you know, we haven't exactly um, signed a contract or anything, but. It's just the right thing to do. Otherwise, we're going to end up really making a mess of the work they did. You know, to get the ductwork and the piping in, so.
Makes a lot of sense. We're going to suspend the suspended ceiling.
Yes, that is correct.
We're not going to drop a drop ceiling.
I love the.
You guys are good. Um, let's see. And, and that's all I have. I don't know if there are any other questions. I do have the, the uh, financial reports as well, but I just wanted to jump on these things first.
I don't think there are any other questions on this. Let's move into the uh, the three documents.
Uh, so the first one is the expense report from the general budget. Um, basically, um, you know, if you look at the last page, there are, there are some accounts that are far under budget, some that are over budget. A lot of the ones that are considerably over budget are a result of, again, we have um. Excuse me, some of the sped tuitions where we need to move the uh, expenses over to circuit breaker and. The two forty grant, so they're just artificially high. Um, but we're at three point seven million dollars as of um, last Thursday, remaining in the year and um. A considerable amount of grant funds get to be, you know, uh, charged for a number of these expenses. So, you know, we're in really good shape as far as that goes. Um, the percent used overall is fifty-two percent of the budget. Pretty much right in line with where we are in the year, so. Um, you know, that's, that's definitely a good thing. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the expense report?
No questions.
Okay, then the next one on the list is the revolving accounts report. Um, just a couple of items to, excuse me, to let you know on these. Uh, the athletic revolving, it will start to increase. We did get the uh, proceeds, the, the gate receipts from basketball. And they're pretty decent amounts too, but I was on vacation the last week of the year, so they didn't get deposited until January. So uh, they will show up in the January balances along with any others that come in during that time. That's basically um, really all I have to report on them again. I mean, lunch, we're missing the December revenues and uh. I, I, they came in in January, so uh, we'll be a little behind with that, but. Um, the rest of the uh, accounts look good. Um, I can answer any questions you might have on these as well.
Anyone have questions for Chris? Okay, and onward to grants.
Okay, so this is the first grants report that you've gotten this year. Um, you know, again, with the late approval of a lot of grants, we just didn't have. All of them approved, certainly not a lot of expenses charged to them. Um, but I did a number of expense transfers to them. I mean, obviously a lot more to go. But um, you can see where we stand. These are all the grants. Uh, again, I mean, the number of grants that we get is, is outstanding. You know, it used to be one page, maybe half full, and it was landscape. Now it's a full-page portrait, so I mean, it's really, there's a lot of grants there and, and a good amount of money uh, that we have coming in to supplement the budget. Um, but as you can see, there's a, a little over seven hundred thousand dollars in grant funds yet to be expended. Some of that is from S R three and will be used to pay for um, a good portion of the um, DER. Design work, um, but nevertheless, there's still a considerable amount that will be charged um, to existing expenses or future ones, so. Um, I can, you know, going forward, obviously, I'll be able to update this every month now.
Great. Any questions for Chris? Chris, did you want to add something to that?
No, I was just going to ask the same thing if there are any questions.
All right, no questions. Chris, thank you so much. Uh, and by the way, I, I would like it better as a, a portrait. It, it just, yeah, gives us more space to work with.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All right, um, we are going to um, move into the final stretch. Uh, we do not have student representative updates, um, and we're moving into action items. Do I hear a motion?
Don't, I'm sorry, did you, did, what they sent to you, so they're not linked here? Did Peg send them to you directly? So my, yeah, I'll, I'll bring December and January to February. You don't have to do it.
We've already uh, voted on B and C, school committee updates, uh, Tara, playground and CES.
Um, so CES, we have a meeting on the thirty-first. So I will report back in February um, on that. Playground, I'll be providing um, some documents for the February meeting as well for you guys to review. Um, and some things that we've been working on to start donors.
Excellent, thank you. Um, on the finance front, there was a finance meeting that took place in uh, December. Um, I can't remember if I already reported out to you all that uh. Uh, there's really nothing to report. Things are moving forward. Um, and there will be a tri-board meeting again. Um, not sure when, but when there is, I will let you know about it. Fields, Paul.
Shout out to Fred Ciagllo, the athletic director, and Chris uh, on the call here. Um. You know, weather obviously stymied, continued progress right now, but they're getting things ready. So when the weather opens up, we can start moving. Uh, one backstop is done, well is in, which is good news. And then they're ordering the scoreboards and bleachers now, now, and meeting with Amasta to talk about. Um, where we've had credits and where we've had new charges just to balance out the, the budget, so. Chris, anything to add? You've been doing a great job working with Fred on that.
No, um, basically, uh, that's about it. We, we had a meeting scheduled for last Wednesday, but Amasta wasn't able to get. The supporting detail for the credits and the new charges. Um, so we're just, we moved the meeting off to this week so that they could have all that information for us. After that, nothing else to report. We, we have asked that, you know, weather permitting over the winter. Um. That we keep whatever we can do moving. I mean, it's not typical that you're doing this kind of work in the winter, but. You know, they can install a backstop. I mean, something like that, you know, can be done. The screens can be put up. Um, some work they were waiting until the ground froze, so. Again, you know, that's, that's work that can be done, and anything we get done now means it won't be, you know, getting done in April or something, so. We'll keep plugging away at it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul and Chris. Moving on to capital and negotiations, Christine.
So we did have a meeting on the sixteenth, uh, and we did present. An offer and we will let you know how they respond uh, at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Um, and at the next meeting, I'm assuming we will likely have an executive session to discuss that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to policy, Ethan.
Yes, so I do want to turn everybody's attention to the link in the agenda that will take you to the uh. Policy subcommittee and uh, and Annie, help me out with this. Uh, I believe what we'd like you to look at is the revised. Uh, it's highlighted the revised J K A A uh, um, policy. From the attorney, this is on uh, physical restraint of students. Um, it is going to replace the, the current policy that we have in place uh, that we did in twenty fourteen. This is a much more detailed policy and, and I, I think we're asking you all to look at it in the hopes that we can bring it for a. Annie, am I right? First and final? Annie, am I right, first and final reading, next?
Yeah, it's next month, correct, because this is also part of DESI requirements.
Yes.
This is part of the special education audit, so these changes, but it is a lot to read, so it's tossing out the current. Wholesale revised, would like to try to do a first and final.
So isn't this month considered the first reading?
No, well, I didn't, I didn't bring it to you in advance, policy, I just got it back from the attorney, policy subcommittee just saw it.
I see.
So that's why we're calling your attention to the policy subcommittee agenda, to see if you can read those revised restraint ones.
Very good, thank you.
Right, so you, you've got the new policy and then, uh, a, a form that's been, uh, cultivated that also you guys should look at as well.
Great, thank you, we'll take a look. All right, anything else to report on policy?
Uh, so then, we're taking a look at some of our homeschooling policies, that's, that's, uh, the bulk of what we did this, this month, or, uh, at four thirty.
All right, terrific, thank you, look forward to that as well. We are not going into executive session, and, uh, we are discussing next meeting dates. So, uh, let's see.
That should be there, right?
It should be. No, it says, it says January twenty-second.
Well, that's not helpful, next meeting dates, oh, that's my Zoom invitation, so the next meeting in February would be. The fourth, uh, Monday is February twenty-sixth.
Twenty-six, that's right. Terrific, I'm hitting yes on that, I think you already sent a, an invite. All right, um. Thank you, everyone, will I hear a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.